So everybody can see, no discussion about that will be happening today. If you want to stay in this meeting, we can't bring it up. The video that Chad posted, he specifically said we cannot talk about.
Hey, are you gonna livestream it?
Yes, right now.
Ruliter.com called me today.
Mm-hmm. It'll be livestreaming right now. We're live. We can't ask any questions about the tax assessors. We gotta keep that on the down-low for now. Hey guys, as far as I know, the only thing we can't discuss is that allegation right now. So, we can't talk about that. We'll see what they allow. People starting to filter in more. Got Mr. Pilch over here. Got a few different people coming in. So, uh, check it out guys. We're going to be live here. Well, we're live now. But they're gonna start filtering in here any second. Oh, there comes one now.
What?
Uh, it's a computer.
Oh.
Is it working? Yeah, it's, it's powered up.
You had some problems.
Turn that down.
Turn it on to one if you would. Just one? No. It's too high. I think stuff left below the way.
Sorry, we can't start till exactly half.
Yeah, we can start later than 2:30, but we can't start earlier than 2:30.
I think I'm gonna start coming to the meetings just for your view.
Yeah, it's kinda nice today especially.
Beautiful.
We like it. Until the wind starts blowing and then it'll blow your hair back if you're sitting next to that window.
Yeah, these windows leak really bad. This building was built by the federal government.
Right.
That's all you can say.
And it was 45 years ago.
Yeah.
You're ready? Okay, we're ready. Uh, it is December 10th, 2019. It's 2:30 PM. This is the time scheduled to have an update with our planning, um, commission or department. All three commissioners are present today. I wanna make sure that the crowd understands, um, that this is a update that is, um, that we have... Is it monthly, Milton, or is it every double week?
Double weeks.
So we have a monthly update. And they tell us what they're working on and what they're working towards. So, this is not for the public to participate and get involved in anything that's an ongoing thing right now. We have a, we have a agenda that is specific and we are gonna follow that. And that's all we're gonna discuss. The public is not gonna be allowed to volley questions at Milton. This is between, um, his staff and the board. Um, if, if at some time you folks wanna all meet with the commissioners, all three at once, I think a lot of you do understand that, um, generally speaking, you can only meet with one commissioner and blah, blah, blah. That's kind of an open meeting. It's not kind of, it is the open meeting law. So we could schedule something like that. But at this point, this is a scheduled agenda is meeting. We're not adding anything to the agenda and we're not open discussing any of the issues that we might have. But feel free to contact any of the commissioners at any time and we'll, we'll be glad to speak to you. Go ahead, Milton.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Good to be here. So, the, the building department and the, I mean, the planning department, here we are at, uh, the 1st of December. 839 building location permits year-to-date. 199 declaration of exempt permits, uh, year-to-date. So that puts us about four permits behind all of last year for building location and declaration of exempt structures.
You didn't go make it up at the end of the year?
I don't think so. So, it, I mean, if the weather stays like this, we might. This is, uh, I don't think the ground's frozen in some places. So, it's, uh, the weather has definitely been favorable for the building. The, uh, our department staffing, we are, we are still vacant one position. Our compliance, one of our compliance positions is still vacant. We continue to advertise looking to fill that, that compliance position. Other than that, the staffing is full. So, on the agenda, we've been talking about for several weeks now, uh, the language on the building location permit. Specifically, we ask applicants when to sign, uh, this statement on the building location permit. Acknowledging that the application is true and correct. That the proposed construction conforms to the dimensions and uses shown on the application. That no changes will be made without first obtaining approval from the planning department. And then finally, um, just the, in red, that they grant permission for Bonner County employees or officials to enter upon the subject land to make examinations or review the premises relative to this application. Now, last sentence has been the part of a lot of discussion in our office. On the declaration of exempt structure, it says basically the same thing. It grant permission to the Bonner County employees or officials to enter on the subject land to make examinations or review the premises relative to this application. The, uh, on the building location permit, the planning department conducts two inspections. The first one is, is we go out and inspect to ensure that the building is located within the setbacks as shown on the site plan. Uh, we, we ask the applicant to call us and tell us when they are ready for that inspection. Sometimes they do. Most of the time, they do not call and ask for that inspection. We have tried different ways to encourage folks to call us and set up that inspection. We usually end up catching it as we're, as compliance is going to other properties. They happen to drive by, uh, a property on the way and they will check and see that that structure is getting prepared to be built. We catch a lot of it that way. A lot of it, we catch it through going through our permits and, uh, double-checked or draw out and check the properties to make sure that that structure's built within the setbacks. The second inspection that we do is the final inspection to ensure that the structure was built in accordance with the plan, with the application, excuse me. The, uh, for example, someone may apply to build a garage and we show up for that final inspection and they put in, uh, an ADU along with the garage, which was not part of the application. Sometimes that happens. We, uh, we inspect for that because, uh, the ordinances require that you can only build a single-family dwelling and an accessory dwelling unit on a piece of property in Bonner County. And so we inspect to make sure that that structure's built the way that they said they were going to build it. We've looked at changing that language because that, the concerns that we've received is that that language is pretty broad. We've talked about changing it to grant permission only to planning department employees to enter on the subject land to make examinations, review the premises relative to this application. We've talked about that among staff, making it specific only to us, which makes sense because it is for us. It's for our application process. We've talked about that. We, we also had some discussion with some folks suggesting that we only do this during normal business hours. I don't have a problem adding that because, uh, why would we go otherwise? You know, we would go during normal business hours. So, I don't have a problem. If that makes somebody feel better, the fact that we say that, that's fine with me. We would not go on our off-hours to inspect. You know what? There is no doubt that, I've, you know, I've worked in places where, uh, you know, contractors wanna be building. And so I've, I've known of counties that will go on the weekends to try and accommodate those folks that are trying to build. But, uh, we don't seem to have that as a request to go off business hours. So, I don't have a problem adding that. That was one suggestion. Another suggestion, this thing is not scroll backwards. Another suggestion was that we, um, ask, that we set up an appointment. That we require those inspections to be done by appointment only. And again, the challenge with that is, is if we did it by appointment only, uh, we could do it that way. But it, it creates a, an additional workload for staff because, uh, the time of, of us making those phone calls, setting those appointments, uh, and then having to go out to that property, we could, we could end up being up in the same area several times. For example, Priest Lake is a good example because it's distant. We don't go up to that area every day of the week because of its distance. We try to plan our inspections so we can group these together. There's other areas on the opposite side of the lake that we try to plan for so we don't, we can do several inspections in one day. So it's more cost-effective. Sending appointments, uh, for us to do that, it could, if, we could end up having to go back and forth to the same area.
Which equates to more cost, higher taxes.
Correct.
Key is try to be this, as functionally efficient as possible.
It is. And so we looked at around the state and trying to, to, uh, see what other folks do. Latah County had one suggesting, it was interesting, this is on their building permit. The building, uh, the permit applied for with this application becomes null and void if no inspection is requested and performed for the work authorized within 180 days from date of issuance. So that, that totally puts that on the property owner to call in for that inspection. If they don't, then the permit goes away and, and they have to pay for a whole new permit, for heaven's sakes.
So they have to come in and do the entire process all over again?
Yeah, any of you interested in that? I just, I just didn't see that as... But it puts the, it puts the responsibility on the property owner to call in for that inspection and get that done.
Only that 180 days wouldn't work here anyway, because a lot of times they're building, they blow up windows. If they start, try to start the fall, they may not get something done. I like the one year because it gives them plenty of time.
Sure, sure.
But if they exceed the one year as it, as it sits now, they still have to go through the whole process again, correct?
But the problem, I think, being is, is after one year, do you realize if they have built something or not built something? I think that that becomes the issue that is a concern is like, well, are they actively doing something or are they not?
Yeah, I think, I think that, I think the clarity on this needs to be that this is, it's a building location permit. It's about trying to make sure that they're actually gonna build in a setback or a floodway or a flood plain where you'd have to come in and say, okay, now you gotta disassemble the building and move it, which no one likes to do, so.
Well, it's, it's, it's that and then it's taxation, making sure that we're properly taxing on the property that is there rather than, um, not, um, if something's built there and we're not getting that taxation-like assessment off that, then everybody else has to pay that, so.
Yeah, so that's...
I'm all for, I'm all for making sure that we capture that.
So, Daniel's here. If he has anything he wants to add to that.
Oh, there you are.
Hi, Dan. Um, we actually offer an extension to people if they come in and get something for them.
As long as they, as long as in contact with you here.
Right, and going back to, uh, to be more efficient. You guys should have, like, two inspections before you get started, call. You're out there, you're everywhere.
Yeah, no, I get, and I get that. We don't wanna send you guys out, you do back and forth, a piecemeal. When a major is south of the lake, that you're running up to the rest of the lake, then you have to go over here. I mean, it makes sense that...
Just since the process is so simple, most people are like, why am I here anyway?
Right.
They'd rather shoot bombs than have your contractor handle a lot of that.
You have a county cell phone?
I do.
And do we have, I mean, typically we have, you have, you have a carry around file with all the active permits in the area that you're...
Right, so since we switch in or out, we can...
Oh, that's right.
Pretty much do that on the fly.
As long as you have cell.
We can download their permit, open it up, take care of that inspection. I did two today for a guy that, after the building works, he's doing three houses. So, get all three ready to go, we've done.
So... So does this language look like it would be fine?
So I guess the one thing that comes up is, is there a possibility that we can check the box to make an appointment? Like, say, you know, I have a problem with you coming out there unannounced and coming onto my property. I check the box and say, "By appointment only" or something like that. And I don't think that's gonna be everybody, like you said with the builders that you're dealing with. They want you out there and the sooner the better, right? Because that's a big deal to them. But some people just don't want you showing up. And I understand that there's a scheduling thing.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think it, to me, I think it'd be worth a try going before, you know, if you wanna make it, if you wanna have a formal appointment. Just give it a shot to see how much the increase costs.
Not for everybody?
Well, no, I mean, it's, no, I mean, if, if it's an option, uh, most people...
People already do that already. If people wanted a appointment, well...
Right, they usually write...
Close their schedule and make that happen.
But if it was right there and you could check it saying, "I prefer this, but by appointment only", then you can check the box and then, you know, you can move on and...
Right, having that information going in through the issuance.
And then this is how you get ahold of me. Because that's another issue we have is every time somebody says, "Well, um, I don't want you coming out there until you get ahold of me", not everybody can, uh, has cell range or whatever and it's hard to get ahold of some folks. So, it, it, you have to, there has to be a given and take.
It's challenging because people's voicemail boxes are either not set up or full, or just out briefly. I just don't wanna answer.
I mean, absolutely. If, if folks want, if, if this will help folks to come in and get a permit, I mean, if this will, if this really is the downfall, why somebody doesn't wanna get a permit? For heaven's sakes, this, this permit is not, the wording on here is not mandated by code. So this is a contract between the planning department and that property owner. That can be changed. That can be added to. I, we don't have a problem with that. We're more interested in the fact that, that they follow the process and, you know, like everybody else. Like I said, we're over a thousand permits this year. There's a lot of people that comply with this, don't have problems with it, and move forward as best we can.
But I mean, I'm in agreement that the language is clumsy. In fact, I was gonna say, you gotta just remove the second sentence in the other part that you're not talking about changing. Because it's redundant.
Okay.
But, uh...
What do you...
Oh, it's, it's where it talks about the dimensions. So it starts on, "I V certify". Uh, but we have read, examined the application and that know, and that know the statements and descriptions to be true and correct. Okay, so that pretty much covers the entire document. And then it says, "I V certify that proposed construction will conform to the dimensions". And well, we've already, they've already certified. I guess, maybe this, maybe the language is a little clumsy there as well. I mean, if you're pulling a permit, you're, you're proposing to build based on what you, what you put on the paper.
Wow, I don't know, but that hits to, that speaks directly to some things we have seen though. I mean, we've seen people pull a permit for something and build something totally different.
Right.
Now, if that was garn, does that mean that they're not going to...
Right, I was gonna say, but that first sentence says that, that, that the statements and depictions, so that means their drawings as well to be true and correct. I mean, I just, it'd be nice to just write this whole paragraph down. I don't think it needs to be that cumbersome.
Okay.
I don't know, I just, I know this language is old.
So, after we have this discussion, where is this going? Is this going to planning and zoning or...
No, no, we'll go back to our office. We'll meet with our attorney and talk about...
It'll come down to...
Make sure that, no, we're done. We're...
Oh, and you're gonna just do it?
Yeah, we're just gonna make the change, yeah. We, we'll take into your, your, we'll take into consideration your comments and we're gonna go be with you.
Really?
With, with great, with great emphasis, we will take your, no, yeah, we're just...
I would hope so.
Yeah, we'll bring it back, we'll bring it back to your look at, but we are gonna just move forward with this. If we need to talk about the second sentence, we'll talk about it.
Well, I mean, it's not, I'm not that in love with it. I'm just, I'm just thinking of ways to chop this down so it's just...
You're right.
Simplify it because it really, technically, it's redundant when you say that you agree the statements and depictions. So that includes your drawings, which includes the measurements on the drawings, the offsets, um, are true and correct.
Right.
Now, like, do you need to certify that the construction's gonna be the same? Well, if it's not the same with the drawing that you gave us, you certified it as true and correct, then, then yeah, you're already in trouble. Bill, you're an attorney. Do you have any comments?
I prefer clarity. So if you wanna, look, this, I would leave it in.
Okay.
Because I, I gather and I understand what you're saying, that it is...
Yeah.
Why not leave it? Uh, it, it shows people, it's, it's more specific as to what we're, we're chasing.
What we're, what we're trying to...
I don't see a reason to take it out, but I also don't, I mean, we're, we're covering our bases with or without it. I'd like to leave it in.
Okay. I, I submit to your comment.
Wow.
I know.
Can we never do that when I make this?
Well, he's, he's a smart head. He went to, he went to college.
I was off the list. I knew we'd get to this point. Okay.
Well, that's the old one.
Yep.
The old language. The old language. Okay, well, I explore the senior edition.
I will bring it up to you.
And if you don't like it, you can just revise it again.
Happy to do that.
And we are going to add a box to check if they needed an appointment.
Yes, I made a note on my.
Let's give it a shot and see what happens. I mean, if it looks like it's starting to encumber a lot of actual costs for.
Well, if we can, if we leave it as an either or.
Right.
Right.
We'll see how many people actually.
Yeah, see how many people actually. For the most part, there's been a thousand people that haven't. Well, there've been a few that have written by appointment.
But if it's an option, there might be people who would prefer you do.
Yeah, my hope, okay, is if it starts costing, costing the county more money, then we'll have one or two options. Either we increase the fee cost and cover it, or we do away with it.
And along that, if we test it, it doesn't.
All right.
Okay. That was easy.
So the changes to Title 11, we continue to work through suggestions from staff. And we've, we have received several phone calls from a couple sewer districts asking us to put the sign-off, the sewer district sign-off back on the building location permit. So if somebody came in to get a building location permit, they would have to go to that sewer district. The sewer district would have to sign off on that building location permit, then they bring it back to us. We do, we do notify the sewer districts when building location permits are taken out in their areas as well as kind of all.
Electronically?
Yeah, electronically.
So by putting the sign-offs back on, then technically what we're doing is we're helping them to enforce their area, which is not our enforceable area.
Well, it, yeah, it helps them, it helps them with knowing what's going on in their sewer district.
We are also contacting them anyway and telling them, hey, there's.
We do.
Because one of the problems I, as you and I have talked about extensively, especially with at least one of the entities, not necessarily the sewer districts, is the time it takes them to process. We've seen some things that have been 90 days. So we've issued a building location permit. Guys are ready to fire it up and go and they're still waiting 90 days for this one particular entity to get back to them with their subject permit.
I get it. It sounds a bit crazy, I said it a bit.
So that's why I'm hesitant to actually go back to putting this, putting the sign-off back on.
We had the discussion with some of the sewer districts in a meeting.
We did, yeah. A year ago, we talked about adding this guy.
Yeah.
Three, four years ago that we removed it, right?
It was. It was August of, uh.
It was, yeah, it was before three.
Seventeen, sixteen.
Yeah, it was a year before Jeff made the commitment. We just removed it off of the, this, yeah, before last minute. It's still on the rest.
And I thought that we were moving forward to actually adding the sewer districts back on the, um, that, back into that list because remember we discussed the timeframe because some of them said, well, yeah, we don't meet but once a month and, you know, we don't approve them. And I said, that's unacceptable, you know, can you do something different? Can you do it electronically between your, um, your people? I thought they said yes, and I thought that, I mean, we were moving that direction.
Were you having confirmation that they've done it?
No.
See, that's where I hesitate. So a guy, this person comes in here at the beginning of the month, they don't meet till the end of the month? There's three or four weeks there that they really aren't doing anything because they haven't got sign-off?
Yep, that has not changed as far as we know, so.
Yeah, that would crush a building.
Yeah.
Basically this time of year.
It is, yep.
Thirty days now, and you can't start. Well, now you can't start till June, you know? There's snow and ice and all.
Yeah, I'd say until they, until they get their response time cleaned up, I, I'm not interested in that.
So what is a, let's just go one little step further. What is an acceptable a week? Ten days?
We, you guys can flip, a lot of these things are simple, you can flip them in a day. If you're working a day, why can't he's going to do it?
Well, I agree. I'm just trying to narrow it down. You can't, you know, I want to give them a target and say if he can do this, this is what our requirement would be. You'd have to process it within a week or ten days or whatever the number is. And then they can say, yeah, we can do that and maybe then we can consider it, but before that, we won't.
The challenge is, is the person comes in for a building location permit and they don't know about that. And so then we have to send them back out.
True.
And, and so it doesn't resolve, they don't, so it puts them behind working with us as well. Because they've got to go obtain that, that sewer sign.
And then come back.
Measure back.
To get their, to get their closure.
And that is the, that's the challenge. And that's why we changed it in the first place was, for heaven's sake, is it just, some of that stuff takes a lot of time?
Well, they keep going back to the same thing. It's not something we regulate, we have any control over.
Nope.
I mean, I think a phone call is, hey, listen, you got a, you got a, we've got a new DLP in your area, it's in your sewer district. Here's the information.
Well, we're, if we're just going to hand off.
Okay. Moving on, the PNC Commission would like a meeting with the board just to review where they are. Just kind of a annual meeting. They've talked about it in years past, haven't done it.
That's what I did.
At this point, it would be in February at some point. Is an evening meeting okay?
Sure. Sure. I don't begin to really like to do meetings.
Yeah, we're, we're supposed to use your.
That's evening, somewhere.
Yeah, just watch the eight February sweep up, yes. I know Association of Counties, P.
Okay.
February.
Yeah, it'll be in February sometime. All right, thanks. So enforcement, we, in the past, we have used public websites for investigation of violations. When we, when we first started the vacation rental ordinance process, we looked at folks who were advertising vacation rentals to identify where those vacation rentals were located. We, we use it for, we don't do that anymore. We used it for looking at, to identify if structures are built on properties or, or not. Sometimes we, we'll be out driving the area and we'll see a building being built and we won't know about that. Or we see a building appear where it hasn't, we haven't seen one before. Sometimes these websites are advantageous to help us identify if something is done on that property or something is going on on that property. So we have in the past used those websites. We, I don't know that there is a problem with doing that. If we were taking something from there, there might be a concern with copyright stuff and I don't know that.
You mean like photographs?
Right.
Well, my first impulse, I have researched this issue thoroughly, but I mean, it is in the public domain. It's the equivalent of social media. I mean, you don't, I mean, you have, once you, once you voluntarily put that information in the public sphere, I, I don't know, maybe the websites have certain terms of service or something.
Yeah, I've heard there's a term of service that says it can't be used for commercial use or something of that nature.
Well, commercial use wouldn't apply to commercial benefit, like trying to monetize it. We're not doing that. We're trying.
Yeah, we're not monetizing it.
I don't know if we can violate it or not.
Technically, well, technically, if we find it, if we find a structure that did exist in the tax rules before, then that is kind of on there.
I guess that would depend on what commercial use. I mean, I, I don't think most people would consider taxes commercial.
Right, I mean, it's in the broader sense, but.
Right, right. So on the space, I don't see a legal challenge there. But again, I'm kind of shooting from the hip. I, I didn't realize that that was going to be. There might be some more legal analysis required and I can do it. I just, I, without, without being too in-depth, I don't anticipate a problem.
So the assessor has long used those different photographs from different homes and stuff like that to show value of a home during BOE or something?
Right. And if somebody voluntarily put that on the website and said, here's what my property is worth.
Right, they're not marketing it. They're not marketing the information off that site. They're using it.
No, we're not using it for, we're not using that for a commercial purpose in my day.
And to me, the key element here is that we catch the people that are trying to, trying to keep them paying taxes basically. Keep them having their assessment decreased, which keeps them from paying taxes, which then shifts that tax burden on the every other taxpayer in the county.
I'm not using it for that purpose.
You're not.
Right, so.
But in a, in a sense, you are to a degree because you're finding people that are building without building location permits.
That's correct.
Which then turns around and triggers, you know, the assessment.
Plus it triggers a, a fee, a double fee. I think that we need to have a better understanding of this as a whole. That's why I brought the assessors part of it up because it seems like we definitely need to say, this is doable and this is not.
I'm reasonably confident it is. I mean, you're placing something in the public sphere. You don't, nobody's forcing you to do that.
Right.
So if you're doing, if you're doing that, you do it with the expectation that anybody can look at it. Unless there's, unless there's something in those terms, in the service, in the terms of service that I'm not aware, I don't know which websites are used or whatever. If we have any specific questions about those, bring it to me. But as a general principle, once you place something in the public domain, you have a right to say, these people get to look at it, but these don't.
Well, no, we've seen the value through BOEs where we've had people that have tried. I mean, I mean, one, one was to the tune of a million dollar tax shift on the rest of the public not telling the truth about their farm, claiming, oh, the building's rundown, we don't have milking machines, we don't have blah, 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 blah. Next thing you know, the assessor pulls up the real estate thing where they're selling it, they have it on the market for 1.9 million, it's got all brand new roofs and brand new sidewalks. That would have been a tax shift to every other taxpayer. We wouldn't have granted that.
Yeah, I know that sounds outside the scope of the public side of things.
But it's similar, it's similar in case only because building location permits get filed, get recorded. The assessor pulls the report so they know, okay, there's a new structure we need to add to the tax rules. It doesn't get added to the tax rules and that person is literally, to a large degree, stealing from everyone else.
So, yeah, probably need.
I could follow up on it.
Both of those situations, in my opinion, I mean, I understand this is, we're talking more about milking situation.
Right.
You might as well know the answer to both.
Sure.
I think, I think the answer may lie, just as likely that it'll lie within these specific terms that are, you know, directed at that website as though it would be any statutory guidance. It might, it might exist, but I'm.
If they were selling the information, then it would be one thing with your.
Yeah, exactly. We're not taking those pictures of those things and putting them on another website.
Yeah, we're not using them for brochures.
I don't know why we would.
Yeah, we would.
We're, so we're all taxpayers, even us.
Even us.
I'm sure there's nobody in the room here that gets all warm and fuzzy thinking about, oh, boy, I get to go pay my taxes. But on the same coke, and you don't want to be picking up the burden for the guy on each side of you. But then he doesn't want to have to pick up the tax burden in years either.
He could go one another second.
It could be. But, yeah, it's, you know, we all have to do our part. And if Henry is not doing his part, then all the rest of us are picking up that slot.
Yep.
And.
And it happens quite.
If we don't like paying our taxes, we certainly don't want to pay somebody else's. And that's what it's about because you don't have to be applying to what the rules are.
So can I get you to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll drop you a memo. But we can, we can discuss it at our, you know, at a, just a chat.
I'd be interested to know the result of that.
I'll research that.
All right. Thanks, moving on.
Jason?
Yeah.
Is he there? He's right there. I'm in plain sight.
Do you have anything for us?
Not really. We're pretty much caught up on our floodplain permits for winter because we're not getting as many in. We'll probably be using that time to look at the community rating system process. I think our big CRS recertification is coming up in five years since our last one. So that was going to, I got the every four years ones pretty quick. I've never done one of the every five years ones because I've been in the job long enough. So that might be a couple of months. We'll see, we'll see.
You know how much I.
Every five years, there's a big, huge CRS recertification where I do more than just sign in, we're still doing.
Which was what, 2015?
I think so. I think if it isn't, if it isn't 2020, it's going to be 2021. But I haven't checked on that. I think it's this year.
Because they're all, it was June of 16, right?
Yeah, but those aren't the same thing.
Okay.
One is for CRS, which is its own thing. One is the FEMA audit, which is its own thing. It doesn't necessarily sync up, so.
Good. Well, that's all I have. Ready to move into executive session to discuss these pending litigation.
I do a few cases in the discussion.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Paul, entertain a motion to go into executive session under the.
Mr. Chairman, I would do an executive session for the 74-66 subparagraph one, cap. Do you second that?
I have a motion in a second. A little call please.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Drabba.
Sorry, I didn't know.
There it is. So, see what happens. That was a colossal waste of time, guys. Let's see. Let's go this way. We're going to go out the southern direction. Yeah. Sorry if that was so boring. That was pretty crazy. Terms of service. People need to look up at that terms of service and see what it says. I'm pretty sure you're not allowed to, uh. Lost, lost in the county building. And what do we got going on here? I missed a lot of you guys' talk. There's only me and one other person recording that I saw. There's a few other people that, a fair amount. Okay. Anyway, I'm going to cut this off. You guys have a good one. Thanks for watching. Special thumbs up for us. Go out and watch Chad's video on the trespasser, the thing that they wouldn't let us talk about. Check into that, guys. This is some messed up stuff. Get out there, start living your dreams. Just hope the county doesn't get you.